All right, we call this meeting of the Nelson County Board of Education to order on February 25th, 2025 at 5:30. Welcome, everyone. Please join in the board as we say the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, guys. Again, welcome on this beautiful sunny day, considering what it looked like a week ago. We'll take it. So tonight, first of all, looking at that agenda, please don't get too overwhelmed. There's a lot on there that was provided to the board earlier. So tonight, what we'll be doing is celebrating Thomas Nelson's staff and students. We'll hear from the leadership team here in a few minutes. We'll also have our annual review of the financial audit for the school year. And we'll be discussing strategic staffing framework for priorities and growth across the district. And exciting news regarding the LPC, we'll be establishing the membership and facility planning process, and we'll be reviewing that here shortly as well. So, moving on, let's welcome Mr. Maryfield as we hear from Thomas Nelson and their team.
Mr. Maryfield, there should be a clicker up there. Do you see it? Then I guess it's not up there.
So we're here today just to celebrate some of the awesome work going on with the Thomas Nelson team. As you all can see behind me, this is about them, their work, as we pilot some of the AI, AI rank change program that's going on. So as we look at some of the district priorities, I think about building teams of teachers, leaders in the diverse learning space, in lab leaders, ag leaders, math leaders, English and science leaders, all creating a network together to where they get to work through this program. I know that the CAP stuff, there's been a lot of active research, they're actually able to partner together too, to build some cross-curricular work with them. So we think about embracing smart technology, looking to the future to build skills, to make outward work in the work of our students, something that really is something that leads to success in the 21st century, ensuring that all of the skills that are necessary before they graduate are built into our curriculum. This is something that they've really taken on. So I think the next slide, it's just a picture of celebrating them. This box is the only one that can't be here. Let's let them introduce themselves really quickly. They don't need to feel too much right there, just to say hi.
They'll stand directly in front of your picture.
It's a 3D image.
There they are.
There we are.
That's so funny.
I'm Alan Brooks. I teach math, and I'm in the Engineering Lab as well. I also teach theater. I'm a student of the school program with this day. Excited for the opportunity, really appreciate it. And excited to learn more about AI and to use advanced technology.
Champion from the National Lab, taught agriculture, bit of what this book said.
Yeah, my name's Alan Hawley. I teach, so I have an authority.
I'm Eric Cook. I'm in the arts learning. I appreciate the opportunity.
I'm Justin Gaddy. I teach the arts learning as well, and I'm assistant leadership coordinator at Thomas Nelson. And I thank you for the opportunity to participate in this and invest in us and our future. So I appreciate it.
Let's give this thing a round of applause. It's all the way down, just being a first dancer, stepping out of your comfort zone, really working with AI and taking that step into more professional development is something that we embrace here. So just really highlighting and celebrating the work from these leaders and all the hard work from all the other leaders here at Thomas Nelson. With that, we're gonna hand it off to Mr. Gary.
So real quick, I'm gonna actually hand it off to Coach Hoist here, and I had a spotlight, Mr. Riku Suki. One more from the conversation that he does a fantastic job on, so.
The, it became really clear that perhaps the reputation precedes me, because I walk in the door and he said, "You have one minute." Y'all can start that timer right now. And it came to me, it's, sorry, because it could take an hour. But honestly, I can crack off Riku for days and days and never really hit every talking point. I really, I didn't necessarily think about organizing it more, like his impact on people and place and purpose. And his stats really are fantastic, but the impact it has on all of the people around him, it was really remarkable. See a kid like him who is at such a little league level, leading the littlest people in our community with such passion, it's really, really powerful. You know, everybody in camp wants to be on Riku's team. Everybody in every council race wants Riku to lead them. It's just, it is the impact on people. And everyone in this building, I think, has been really, really, really powerful. He's changed this place in a way that I don't know many other students really has. And then he's put this on the map that lots of people in Nelson County don't even know exists. And that, like, people in the running world, the whole world, know who we are now because of him. And the place, I think, has also had a lot of impact and kind of footprints that stamp on him, whether he wanted it or not. And then it might be Amy Durbin's nagging, or, you know, what it is. But like, the place, I think, is, you know, that aspect kind of goes both ways. And then he has put us on the map, but all the while, I think that hopefully, anyway, we have lessons worth kind of positive imprinting is coming up through this place. But his purpose is very clear. But I'm just gonna run through a couple of these really quickly, and I'm not even gonna be able to, like, touch the surface. But he's a national champion at the 5K. He's the state record holder at that distance. He's two-time Gatorade Player of the Year, something that most people would never have happened to him one time. He's already done it twice. He's won, and I can get into all of these numbers, but something I'll brag about a little bit, without even touching on all of the stats that kind of helped me to picture. He has not lost a state championship race since he was in ninth grade, and he lost it to Lane. Who would really appreciate me saying that. Other than, Riku led half of that race, and in pushing Lane to barely beat him in it, they both ran under a 37-year-old state league record that day. And really, it was the freshman who got runner-up who could probably get all the credit for it. So it's just, next week, he's gonna toe the line at a state championship meet. And, you know, everybody tries to beat that guy, and they haven't in three years. So it's just, I'm really blessed that I get to work with them all, you know, all the time. I could just go on and on and on. The stats are just pages long. But I appreciate you all recognizing him. And I think that it's, I'm really, I'm really grateful that he's the face on the side of our building.
In the mailer that just went out to all staff, he did acknowledge the strategy to beat you.
I'm not sure, I'm assuming that is a true strategy that he would employ.
I think so, yeah. I've already called out, and, yeah, basically, the sit and kick is who's gonna wait behind that person? And then how's he gonna get in? He gave me a little bit of acknowledgement for maybe having some kind of, like, old man endurance. Literally, I opened this, and like, I still had the document in the crates, you know, so I was like, oh, I wonder. And sure enough, like, it said, "He's slower."
I think that really sums up Riku. He brings a smile to places he's in, for sure. And, you know, to spotlight Coach Hoist and the program he built, you know, Bailey Houghton's another young lady who's had one state title, who's performing at extremely high level. Just the other day, she came in early to school on a Saturday to do an AP practice exam. Well, before that, her parents were telling us that she went and got up early that morning at 5 o'clock to make sure she got her work out in that day. Right? So that's the kind of dedication and program that Coach Hoist has built. And we're super happy to have Riku and Coach Hoist as part of this place, as they make it better and special to be a part of it. So thank you guys both for coming, for sure. So I wanted to quickly spotlight the fact that we got just about half our kiddos participating in programs. I'm really proud of that number. It's continuing to grow every single year. The last two years, we've been able to add trap shooting, which has almost every student involved in that, wasn't involved in any other program. So I'm really proud of that program as it started, as well as this spring, we're starting boys volleyball. We've really seen that number jump up to about 16 kids are engaged in that right now. We had about 36 initially say they're involved, so we're trying to recruit them out as well. We just know that these experiences are truly powerful for kids, not only sports, but student leadership overall, including clubs. It's extremely powerful for kids. It keeps them engaged in our school, gives them purpose in this place. And I'm definitely really proud of the work we're doing across all of our programs, clubs, sports included. And I think the work we continue to do obviously makes this place better, makes the experience better for students. And I'm looking forward to continue to try to build more programs to engage more kids. So that's what it's all about, engaging as many of them as possible in these really powerful programs. And we're all trying to chase Coach Hoist in there, trying to have these programs, especially those there. So really powerful stuff.
Thanks, Jill.
Thanks, guys.
And Haley Boggs, you wanna come on up so we don't miss you? Come on up, just because we know you came to the party.
I'm honest, I was thinking that I had no chance.
So Ms. Boggs is also part of the AI program. We just wanted to make sure that you had a moment.
The team's work here at Thomas Nelson, there's been lots of very intentional work, very thoughtful work from the teachers and the admin here. So he's gonna share a little bit about that.
I think it just goes back to teams and team building. When you think about investing in purposeful planning, our design teams, whether it be math, English, but also science, history, our electives in the arts, wellness and business as well, they all have common planning, so they're able to work together around specific priorities and goals that they have, not just for their program and the students in it. They have time to measure what matters, really look intentionally at the data that's brought back through assessments like this, but also just formative assessments within the classroom, and then really diving deep into that data to build in renewal processes, to come back to that, look at where are gaps in learning, how can we continue to build that, but also accelerate learning to ensure that we're being intentional to meet every student where they are. So I think this is something to celebrate, not just in numeracy and literacy, but really in all contents here at Thomas Nelson. Our teams of leaders have been working very diligently to support students in every realm and facet of their life. So just some big celebrations for our team here. Thank you.
Thanks, Karen. I'm gonna give you guys a clap for that. I'm also anxious to hear, as you guys dive deep around the AI and how the collaboration goes, maybe come back at another time so we can sort of dive a little deeper into that conversation. I'm excited about that. So moving on to guest comments, I'm gonna read this, but I do not believe we have anyone speaking tonight. Everyone has informed me that they could not make it. But we always thank you for attending our Nelson County Board of Education meeting. Any person wishing to address the board may do so by following the rules. Individuals representing themselves are limited to three minutes. Individuals representing a group are limited to five minutes. Please step forward, state your name, address, and if you represent a group, state your name of the group you're representing. As I said earlier, though, no one is making it tonight. So I'm sorry about that. And I would like to note that I appreciate those who've submitted written comments and that those are distributed to the board members. And just remind folks that that is a good way, if you're unable to come, you can submit the comments in writing, and those are shared with us. And then they will also be added to the minutes for the evening. Thank you for bringing that up. All right, moving on, guys. So we have the consent agenda. As I said earlier, this is, since we are a week behind, we got this a few weeks ago. We get an opportunity to look over these, ask any questions that we may have. Does anyone have any questions on the consent agenda? If not, I would ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. I'll make a motion. Thank you, Ms. Dr. Lee. I'm gonna need a second.
A second.
A second from Ms. Eaton. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. All right. Moving on, we are, over the last few meetings, we've been discussing the guest comment policy. This was at the request of multiple board members. At this point, we have sort of revised the policy and the verbiage around that. Did anyone have any questions regarding the guest comment policy? Did we need to do a reading on that, since this would be a policy change?
Yeah.
I don't think it's really an emergency, but.
No.
Yeah. So we don't have to read that out loud, correct? We can just say that we posted it, and we consider this our first read. All right, thank you. Do we need to approve that?
Just, if this is the first reading.
Nothing. Okay. I'm so grateful you're here. Mr. Crawford, our board attorney, is here tonight, and I'm so grateful, because these are the questions that I would not be able to answer. I appreciate that. All right, so moving on, we get to welcome our lovely Ms. Rogers here as she talks about the annual financial audit.
Actually, I'm just gonna introduce our auditors. As you know, every year, we have an independent audit. And Tammy Patrick is here from Patrick and Associates, and she will give us a summary of their findings.
Fantastic.
Good evening. It's great to be back this evening. Get to present the audit report to you all. I think Jessica has already distributed that to you electronically, so hopefully, you've had a chance to look at that, and you can fill for sure who's in the letter, just kind of a brief overview that we give out, so it's easy for y'all to kind of, just kind of look at that real quickly and get a brief overview of the audit, see what they're, what are the findings. I want to thank Superintendent Bradley and Jessica and her staff for their hard work during the audit. It is a lengthy process, and I'll kind of give you a little bit of a quick overview of what we do. The audit, you know, we come in, we look at internal controls and processes, documentation, full samples. We look at specific transactions, things of that nature, in all areas. We look at things in cash, your capital assets, debt, expenditures, payroll, food service, student activity funds, single audit, and then just various internal control and compliance issues that are, some of them are state mandated things that we have to check up on, and then just other general compliance areas in addition to what we look at for your internal control and compliance with your major federal programs each year. So, and when we're doing that, your audit is a direct result of the things that Jessica and the staff at the board and your activity fund, bookkeepers do day to day, week to week, month to month. It's a culmination of all those efforts throughout the year. But your audit results, which luckily, and not luckily, but based on that work, again, we're issuing an unmodified opinion, which is the highest opinion that you can have, and we did not have any findings that we felt would, you know, rise to any kind of level of a verbal or written or things of that nature. So really great audit, a brief overview of the financials. You all's net position went up by about $4 million for this week here. And that amount is a calculation, and it's a combination of decreases and increases in your cash balances, your investments in your capital assets, coupled with your deferred inflows and outflows, which basically relate back to your net pension and open liability amounts, as well as your net pension open liabilities and your general liabilities. So you all had a positive increase in your net position. You also had about a $20 million increase in your fund balance, but don't get too excited. The majority of that is sitting in your construction fund. And that's based on those bond proceeds that you all received from the bond issuance, if the district did, in fiscal year '24. It is sitting there to be used for your construction projects that those were issued for. The general sum did have a slight increase of about $950,000 per year, which is good. And the majority of that is sitting there as unassigned, which is available for use for the day-to-day operations of the district. So that's always good. Again, I just want to say that we bring on, I hope Jessica thinks the same thing. We hope to be back this year. And do y'all have any questions?
Any questions? No, but I will share your gratitude for Ms. Rogers as well, because I do believe that it has a great deal to do with her and her team and the integrity that they have to making sure that everything is kept cohesive. So I would definitely second that.
Yes, you do. And the report, it all starts at the top, so, all the way from the superintendent to the board to Jessica, like I said, all the way up to all the schools. So thank you all. Anytime you have any questions, feel free to reach out. Jessica knows how to reach you.
So he's going to share a little bit about that.
I think it just goes back to uh, teams and team building. When you think about investing in purposeful planning, uh, our design teams are whether it be math and English, but also science, history, our electives in the arts, wellness and business as well. They all have common planning, so they're able to work together around specific priorities and goals that they have, not just for their program and the students in it. Uh, they have time to measure what matters, really look intentionally at the data that's brought back through assessments like this, but also just formative assessments within the classroom. And then really diving deep into that data to build in renewal processes, to come back to that, look at where are gaps in learning, how can we continue to build that, but also accelerate learning to ensure that we're being intentional to meet every student where they are. Uh, so I think this is something to celebrate, not just in numeracy and literacy, but really in all contents here at Thomas Nelson. Um, our teams of leaders have been working very diligently uh, to support students in every realm and facet of their life. So just some big celebrations for our team here. Thank you.
Thanks, Karen.
I'm going to give you guys a clap for that. I'm also anxious to hear as you guys dive deep around the AI and how the collaboration goes. Um, maybe come back at another time so we can sort of dive a little deeper into that conversation. I'm excited about that. So moving on to guest, guest comments, um, I'm going to read this, but I do not believe we have anyone speaking tonight. Everyone has informed me that um, they could not make it. Um, but we always thank you for attending our Nelson County Board of Education meeting. Any person wishing to address the board may do so by following the rules. Individuals representing themselves are limited to three minutes. Individual representing a group are limited to five minutes. Please step forward, state your name, address, and if you represent a group, state your name of the group you're representing. As I said earlier though, um, no one is making it tonight. So I'm sorry about that.
And I would like to note that I appreciate those who've submitted written comments and that those are distributed to the board members. And just remind folks that that is a good way, if you're unable to come, you can submit the comments in writing and those are shared with us.
And then they will also be added to the minutes for the evening. Thank you for bringing that up. All right, moving on, guys. So we have the consent agenda. Um, as I said earlier, this is, since we are a week behind, um, we got this a few weeks ago. We get an opportunity to look over these, ask any questions that we may have. Does anyone have any questions on the consent agenda? If not, I would um, ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Ms. Dr. Lee. I'm going to need a second.
A second.
A second from Ms. Eaton. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. All right, um, moving on, we are, um, over the last few meetings, we've been discussing the guest comment policy. Um, this was at the request of multiple board members. Um, at this point, we have sort of revised um, the policy and the, the verbiage around that. Did anyone have any questions regarding the guest comment policy? Did we need to do a reading on that since this would be a policy change?
Yeah.
I don't think it's really an emergency, but.
No.
Yeah, so uh, we, we don't have to read that out loud, correct? We can just say that we posted it and we consider this our first read. All right, thank you. Do we need to approve that? Nothing, okay. I'm so grateful you're here. Mr. Crawford, our board attorney is here tonight. And I'm so grateful because these are the questions that I would not be able to answer. I appreciate that. All right, so moving on, um, we get to welcome our lovely Ms. Rogers here as she talks about the annual financial audit.
Actually, I'm just going to introduce our auditors. As you know, every year we have an independent audit. And Tammy Patrick is here from Patrick and Associates, and she will give us a summary of their findings.
Fantastic.
Good evening. It's great to be back this evening and get to present the audit report to you all. I think Jessica has already distributed that to you electronically. So hopefully you've had a chance to look at that and you can feel for sure who's in the letter about just kind of a brief overview that we give out. So it's easy for y'all to kind of uh, just kind of look at that real quickly and get a brief overview of the audit, see what they're, what are the findings. Um, I want to thank Superintendent Bradley and Jessica and her staff uh, for their hard work during the audit. It is a lengthy process. And I'll kind of give you a little bit of a quick overview of what we do. Uh, the audit, you know, we come in, we look at internal controls and processes, documentation, full samples, we look at specific transactions, things of that nature in all areas. We look at things in cash, your capital assets, debt expenditures, payroll, food service, student activity funds, uh, single audit, and then just various internal control and compliance issues that are, some of them are state mandated things that we have to check up on. And then just other general compliance areas in addition to what we look at for your internal control and compliance over your major federal programs each year. So um, and when we're doing that, your audit is a direct result of the things that Jessica and the staff at the board and your activity fund, uh, bookkeepers do day to day, week to week, month to month. It's a culmination of all those efforts throughout the year. But your audit results, which luckily, and not luckily, but based on that work, again, we're issuing an unmodified opinion, which is the highest opinion that you can have. And we did not have any findings that we felt would, you know, rise to any kind of level of uh, verbal or written or things of that nature. So um, really great audit, a brief overview of the financials. You're all set, position went up by about $4 million for this week here. Um, and that amount is a calculation and it's a combination of decreases and increases in your cash balances, your investments in your capital assets, coupled with your deferred inflows and outflows, which basically relate back to your uh, net pension and open liability amounts, as well as your net pension open liabilities and your general liabilities. So you all had uh, a positive increase in your net position. You also had about a $20 million increase in your fund balance, but don't get too excited. The majority of that is sitting in your construction fund.
Right.
And that's based on those bond proceeds that you all received from the bond issuance that the district did in fiscal year '24. It is sitting there to be used for your construction projects that those were issued for. Um, the general fund did have a slight increase of about $950,000 per year, which is good. And the majority of that is sitting there as unassigned, which is available for use for the day to day operations of the district. So that's always good. Um, again, I just want to say that we bring on, I hope, I hope Jessica thinks the same thing. Um, we hope to be back this year. And do y'all have any questions?
Any questions?
No, but I will share your gratitude for Ms. Rogers as well, because I do believe that it, it has a great deal to do with her and her team um, and the integrity that they have to making sure that everything is kept cohesive. So I would definitely second that.
And the report, it all starts at the top, so all the way from the superintendent to the board to Jessica, like I said, all the way up to all the schools. So thank you all. Anytime you have any questions, feel free to reach out. Jessica knows how to reach you, so. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, so moving on, we have Ms. Rogers and Mr. Martin, who will be discussing tentative staffing allocations.
All right, so for our tentative allocation discussion, um, this is really an ongoing process. This is very introductory, just kind of overviewing uh, what we anticipate to happen over the next few months. Uh, again, this will come up again in April, but um, we actually met today uh, with a few of our principals for kicking this conversation off. We'll be with more uh, tomorrow and, and the next day with HR and finance. But really, it is, it is an ongoing discussion. It's also an ongoing staffing discussion with you guys and think about board priorities and what we're really focused on about using, utilizing our personnel. And really, again, we'll revisit this uh, at the April board meeting before May 4th to establish those final allocations. So this is just an overview of the process, uh, lots of folks involved. Um, really when, when speaking to our team and also speaking with you guys and thinking about board priorities, these are very much the things that we're hearing and the things that we want to commit to with our staffing process. So obviously focusing on reading and math instruction from a K-12 standpoint, making sure we're getting the proper resources and curriculum uh, in those spaces. Also investing in content experts and boards. We've seen that happen uh, in a number of different cases. And we're trying to figure out how do we continue uh, to leverage that and really increase that um, throughout the district. And then also career growth and compensation. So we've made a number of steps to really support our people in that measure. Uh, we want to continue to prioritize that. So really, these are some of the big priorities that we've heard from you guys. Uh, and this will guide us in the staffing decision-making process. So um, some of this is terminology, just kind of overviewing. You think about the people that are inside of your schools. Uh, and we had this uh, financial discussion. There's lots of different pots of money. Money goes into these different things. And then from these different pots, your allocation emerges. It's really the same way with staffing. So when you see this, we'll refer to section four, section five, section six. Again, think of those as different pots of funds. Your section four uh, contains your certified folks, such as your teachers, counselors, building administrators. Uh, section five, your classified staff, and really in most buildings, that's your, most of your front office staff and instructional assistants. Section six, that's really spending money that schools and SBDMs have control over to spend on students. Traditionally, we've done a hundred dollars per student in that pot. Section seven is typically our special program in related arts. Uh, sometimes it's referred to as above and beyond allocation. And then we also have our diverse learning. And obviously, that team is assessing student needs and uh, what students need and how we can service them. So really, schools will get allocations from all of these different pots, just to be clear. Today, the only ones we're really looking at today in terms of board approval would be looking at kind of the ratios. And the way that it works out, uh, for the most part, is really based upon your enrollment. What does that enrollment look like? Kind of dictates uh, for the most part, the number of staff that you have. There are a few outlying things uh, in terms of needs of the building. But essentially, what we're looking to approve today, uh, and these are the same ratios that we've worked from in the past. So really, you're looking to project student enrollment at the K-2 level in a building. And then for every 22 kids, you would allocate a certified teacher. So for the third, for the fifth, that's what we're looking for. Uh, and then as the kids get older, you know, they need not as much uh, teacher support per se in terms of class sizes tend to be a bit larger. Uh, and then really, we're looking at section six. We're looking to approve a hundred dollars per student. These ratios are exactly what we've done in the past. So today, you're approving this. That helps us continue the conversation with local schools in terms of uh, working with the projections, seeing where that lies. And then we can work with them on, here's what your allocation would be. And we finalize that in April. Any questions in the process?
What is the reason that the sixth to eighth grade ratio is higher than the high school ratio?
That's a good question. So at the high school level, we have lots of different programming. It's not necessarily, that doesn't necessarily fit into one of these types of funds. So for instance, the, the up center, typically high school scoop, high school students have access to that space. Really, that's their added um, teachers that lowers that class size down. So, so the high schools won't receive a section seven allocation. So where does these additional staff numbers come from? Our PBE allocation that we have with our workforce leaders, that's not a section seven. Like, that's part of the high school staffing along with the up center. The middle schools will receive a section seven, and that's what gets their class ratios down. So in reality, the sixth through the eighth is pretty, or sixth through the 12th, excuse me, is a pretty similar uh, student staff ratio after it all shakes out. It's just how they come from the different pots of funds.
That kind of scared me.
Are these ratios consistent with what we did last year? I know there was some change in with the elementary, is that right?
So this is exactly what we did last year. And last year, we did decide to allocate more resources at the K-5 level. But this mimics what we had. This is also, these, these are below the state uh, I guess, caps per se. So, but it is consistent with what we've done last year.
I'm glad to see the lower ratio in K through second, that is lower than the state requirement, because that allows for more interventions, I assume, and um, for example, our literacy specialist, correct?
So literacy specialists would be out of a different pot than that, actually.
Okay.
To be fair, I think we all understand that uh, younger students probably need a bit more support than our older ones, and so that's why we've allocated resources for that.
Yeah, it's safe to say our class sizes are, are smaller than average class sizes. Uh, and part of that is the way we've worked to support outlying schools that have um, kind of these, somewhere between 25 and 40 per grade in Boston and New Haven, depending on the year, as well as Bloomfield Elementary School, where we've kind of had to move some different things around. That's one of the reasons we moved to this lower, this lower uh, ratio last year, was because of the transition we saw at Boston and New Haven and Bloomfield uh, as well.
It is a bit more challenging there in those spaces because they have fewer students. It means they have fewer staff in general. It allows for less flexibility. And the numbers don't always work out uh, very clean, right? So those smaller schools are a bit more problematic, but more, more challenges to work through.
From a staffing standpoint, you know, there's obviously advantages in other ways.
Right.
I think uh, that cost us around $450,000 last year. Is that, that was our estimate?
Yes.
So reducing it to the number 22 was about $450,000 commitment.
Are we still providing classified staff in all kindergarten classrooms?
Right, so at the K level, at the K level, so 22 to 1, that also means uh, those classes have instructional assistants in that space. So if a school, based on projections, were looking at four uh, kindergarten classrooms, they would also have four instructional assistants in part of that space.
And preschool would not be included in this allocation because it's a separate funding source.
Yes.
So are y'all counting the assistant for the special needs kids too? For the special needs kid in there, is that kind of?
So that's a, that would fall under the first, that's under the diverse learning pot of funds, which is.
But the 22 to 1 is not calculated with that special needs assistant?
That special ed team has a, has a way that they go about their process in terms of identifying allocation. Um, but they'll also really have uh, two types of folks that kind of inside the school, you're looking at a certified teacher, and then you're also looking at an instructional assistant being there based on student needing. That's kind of assessed at a school to school situation as a case by case basis.
We do spend beyond the federal funding for diverse learning. We spend above and beyond the, the federal funding. Just some context, not all districts do, Nelson County does.
So really today, you're just looking to approve these two things. And that allows us to continue to move forward with the staffing conversation. And then April, we'll come back with some uh, allocation numbers.
All right, so any further discussion? All right, so I will need an, an motion to approve tentative staffing formulas for further discussion with local principals and SBDM councils.
I'll make a motion.
All right, thank you, Mr. Norman. A second.
A second.
And Ms. Eaton, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. All right.
That, that conversation will continue over the next uh, couple of months.
Correct.
Cause it is, there's so many layers to it that we want to talk through.
Sounds good, all right. The next um, exciting moment of the night is the LPC membership. Uh, Mr. Martin and Superintendent Bradley.
I think we started talking about this January 21st. So it's been a little over a month. Um, just as a reminder, 702KR4180 defines the process. So there's two components to the process tonight. The first component is ensuring we have one representative from these six schools and two representatives from these three schools. Uh, as well as the second component is that the board will be making decisions on three community leaders and a board member. During the January 21st meeting, we summarized some characteristics of LPC membership. We provided that to schools, we provided that to the community as a reference point. Uh, not only do we advertise in the Kentucky Standard, we also share it on social media as well as sent messages out to all families. Um, and these characteristics were what we shared in terms of strong LPC membership characteristics. These members from our community uh, schools were chosen either as a teacher, parent representative, central office representative, administrator of representatives, planning and zoning and facilities. These members that are in green are already defined based on the reg and our process. These are all members chosen, so Ms. Hogan was chosen by the district office. Jim Nelson was chosen by planning and zoning. Kevin Mattingly is the, the director of facilities. These four administrators were chosen. As well as Boston only had a parent representative, so that is all that they would have. So today, the other remaining options will be sorted through in a random draw. We're going to have two members of the audience. Ms. Grace Cox, who's so excited to be a part of the draw. She has no idea what she's drawing for, as well as uh, Ms. Caitlin Norris from the Kentucky Standard. Uh, I will be drawing from the process that Mr. Martin will explain. We already have one parent, so we'll be choosing four teachers and three parents.
Thank you, ladies, for actually taking the opportunity to do this for us.
Welcome to the party.
Attaining in technique.
Caitlin Norris, come on up. Grace Cox, come on up.
You're the next contestant.
We'll fold them up in a bit. Spread them out right here so that you guys can see.
I'm not sure what's going on. This is not part of the plan over here.
We want to make sure it's efficient.
Mr. Martin, which, could you reiterate the purpose of the drawing, why these are not already fixed?
Right, that's part of the process, I think. Try not to get my things mixed up there, David. So, all right, here's, here's, here's where we are. So um, as Mr. Bradley explained, really, we're looking to uh, seat our LPC, making sure that this process is really as fair and equitable as possible. It's obviously the goals of the process. Um, essentially, what we have is at each of the local levels, uh, parent group, conducted an election locally where folks were nominated. There was an election held and parents were elected to be part of the random drawing. Likewise, in the teacher process, teachers were nominated, they had local elections, and teachers voted on who they would like to move forward with the random drawing. And these are the names that essentially won their local elections. Now, because we need uh, really based on process elimination, we need one representative from each of the schools, and these three schools will have two. Um, here's, here's where we have. The, the four building administrators, um, they were nominated, they were elected by their peers. So they, therefore, they're taking uh, those seats. So Cox's Creek really did not host a parent or teacher election uh, because the one seat that they have is held by Ms. Haley Victory. Uh, at Boston, like Mr. Bradley communicated, there, no teachers were nominated. Uh, they had one parent that was nominated, and this parent obviously won their uh, local election. So they moved forward. So essentially, Boston has to have a representative. This person has to be on the LPC because that is the only person. So really, of the nine schools that are eligible to participate, Cox's Creek has already been taken care of, and Boston has already been taken care of. So really, what that means for say, New Haven, uh, who will take the seat? Mary Bagwell or Jeff Parrish, we're going to conduct a random drawing to see which of these two will take the seat. Uh, and to make it really, again, as fair as equal as possible, we have two boxes. And then one box has the seven schools that we need. Again, Cox's Creek's not needed because it's already checked, and Boston's not needed because that's already checked. So of the seven schools remaining, those are listed there. Uh, you guys can see those. And then the, in the other box are really, it doesn't list the person's name, it just says teacher. Right, so we need four teachers. So it's, there's four slips of paper that say teacher, and there's three, three slips of paper that say parent, because we already have one parent that's already taken a seat. So what we're going to do is we're going to fold these up. And we're going to put the schools in one box, and then we're going to put the parents and teachers in the other box. And then our representatives are going to essentially draw out. So the first person will come up, they're going to draw on the school box. And let's say they draw Bloomfield Elementary. And then they're going to go to the parent or teacher box, they're going to draw to that. And let's say they draw parent. So if they draw Bloomfield Elementary parent, then that means that representative would then take the seat. Really, the only thing that's uh, a little wrinkle in our mix is Jeff Parrish is a parent nominee from New Haven and a parent nominee from Thomas Nelson. And the reason why he was able to do that, obviously, he won those elections, but he's also, he also has students that attend both of those spaces. So Jeff Parrish uh, cannot serve on the LPC as a New Haven parent and a Thomas Nelson parent. So really, if, if New Haven parent or Thomas Nelson gets parent, gets drawn, we'll have to uh, rearrange some things per se in our boxes. So what that would mean, let's say, New Haven parent's drawn, then Thomas Nelson teacher would automatically be on by process elimination, so.
And I would like to um, reemphasize that when we had KDE down for the training process, they spoke about this drawing as a method for selection, a random drawing.
I feel like this is Alex's way of saying I didn't cover all my bases when I introduced it.
Well, we didn't want any questions. So I guess before we start, let's see if we have any questions.
Tim? Alex has been marking on this speech here for at least, at least two days.
Okay, so our first slip we have, you guys already have phoned it up?
And Mr. Crawford, can you verify this is the correct process?
I think we're taking it a step further, I promise.
Oh, we are, okay. All right. Why don't tell? One of you guys want to come? I guess I can hold one up.
Please, Tim.
Thank you, appreciate you.
You guys stand right here, though, Jimmy.
Stand on camera.
I'd like to see that on camera, please.
All right, so, so the first box, check. So the first box, you're going to draw out of a school box here. Let's open it up and check it out, all right. Bloomfield Elementary, okay. So now you're drawing parent or teacher. Parent. Bloomfield Elementary, parent. All right. So now we're drawing back to schools. Bloomfield Middle School. Parent. All right. Five more to go, going back to school. Thomas Nelson. Teacher. Nelson County High School. Teacher. O'Kentucky Home. Parent. All right, what do we got left? One left? Two left?
Two.
New Haven School. Teacher. So we're going to leave it's Foster Heights. Teacher. All right, thank you. All right. Thank you guys for your assistance.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
So this would be the uh, the teacher, parent, community, oh, sorry, teacher, parent, planning and zoning, central office, facilities and administrative groups that have been selected. Uh, my next step will be to communicate with this group of people to make them aware. Uh, and uh, in the case that someone isn't, isn't able to or willing to serve, the local planning committee would be the one to fulfill the process once it begins. Uh, based on my understanding from KDE, uh, it's this. Based on my understanding from KDE, it's this, it's the other group of people that would determine the process to help them fulfill those roles. So that's the, that's the part that the superintendent really is responsible for overseeing, and I feel good about the process employed with our team and our principals across the district, and look forward to beginning the process in the next two weeks. I'll be communicating with team members tomorrow, and I'll talk more about that timeline later as we move on to the next slide. So the next part is the Board of Education selection of community leaders and board members.
Well, Mr. Gilliland had submitted his nomination, and I think I had mentioned back in January that I think he would be a great fit for this. So I would like to nominate Jody to be our representative on the LPC.
I would second that.
All right, all in favor? Oh, go ahead.
Mr. Gilliland, I would like to take a moment and just encourage you to involve all community within our Nelson County area during your exploration for this. I know that we each represent individual districts when we are elected, but we are part of Nelson County as a whole, and I would like to ensure that each of our communities is equally represented through this process.
Thank you. All right, all in favor of Mr. Gilliland?
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, motion passes. So I'm going to talk a little bit about the community member representatives. We had a great pool of people send in their nominations. We had ten, ten members of our community submit applications to be part of the local planning committee. And they were all well spoken and believed in this process. And the board had, well, I say the board, we had some, I had presented the questions that I felt were going to be substantial to this process. Ms., or Dr., sorry, Dr. Lee had helped me negotiate some of those questions and make sure that they were well intended to vet our community members very well. I interviewed each community member, and I made a recommendation to the board. My recommendations were based on community leadership, these are business owners, and the ability for them to actually be present at these meetings was highly important to me. Also, the fact that they lead in the community, they are actually part of being in our community on a regular basis, and I think that spoke to what they were going to be able to bring to the table. They also are very diverse in their approach to, or what they do in the community and actually their businesses as well. And my recommendation to the board was Rebecca Eisen, Tina Long, and David Cook. Again, the board has the authority to take that recommendation, or they can open this up for discussion.
Ms. Bowling, I would like to hear some conversation on how you ensured that the process was equitable and fair to each of the ten applicants, please.
Well, I think, first of all, I tried to find people that were not just living centralized to Nelson County. We had a member, Tina Long, she actually lives in Bloomfield, and she is a city council member for Bloomfield, and I thought she would really bring a lot to the table, speaking for that community. She would be able to actually speak highly about what, what happens in her community and how she can best connect to the members of her community, which was also a part of that conversation. One of the things that I asked each of them to do was that I'm going to challenge each board member to actually host some sort of forum in their community and invite, whether it's a community leader or a parent or teacher that's on the LPC, to be part of that process. So I wanted to make sure that they were willing to do that as well. I also spoke about what the process of the LPC was and the responsibility that would lay on their shoulders being part of the local planning committee, and everyone melted that challenge very well. They all believe that they are looking into the future and not into just right now and where we sit, and they, they believe that we have to look ahead. I also talked a lot about making sure there was no conflicts of interest, making sure that, that these, these members were going to stand on their own without outside influence, that they were going to be able to ask questions and challenge the process, and that was also part of the, the integrity of that communication.
Without naming names, were there any candidates who did have or present a conflict of interest?
Yes, there were.
So can you give us an example of the nature of conflict of interest that may have been considered?
One was on litigation that was, that at the time was against the Board of Education. One was a past board member, and I felt those two for sure would be knocked off of the table altogether, litigation in itself, and also just bringing bias to the table as a board member. I just felt that, that it would leave us vulnerable in any type of situation. Again, with litigation, that was extremely important to me to make sure that we took any of those conflicts off the table. And there were a few others that just had deeper relationships with individual board members that I also took off the table.
I know that we had a prior lawsuit related to the seating of the LPC, and given that we are board members who are selecting three community members, and what, what were some of the pieces that came up in that lawsuit that we should be aware of to ensure that we are doing things above the board here? I know transparency is very, very important in that.
Well, I don't.
Well, I can speak to that.
Like, I'm not sure I'm comfortable speaking to.
I think there's a couple of layers. One, you know, the, the REG defines the process, and I would say there's no one probably in the state of Kentucky that met the level of fidelity to the process that we met four years ago or today. However, that doesn't mean that you won't have faced litigation. I think what we know is, when we went through the process four years ago, we knew we were going to get litigated before we went through the process, and that litigation still exists. So I think that the claims are primarily playing on some ambiguity within the regulation, suggesting, you know, that this conflict of interest occurred, this conflict of interest occurred. I'm not sure, is it called a motion when you, when you file a claim and then you ask the judge to make a motion? Is that what it's called?
Give the motions initiated with a complaint issued to the summons, and if you want the court to make ruling, file a motion.
So from what I can discern, there's not been a motion filed on that particular claim since it was originally filed, meaning it was filed and that it was used as a kind of a generic threat. And I share that just publicly because that's how it's played out. We expect to get litigated again on this because that's the nature of things. So I'd say over the next two to three months, depending on the process, we could expect likely to experience additional litigation. And I think that's just, you know, a byproduct of the times we live in, a highly litigious society where anyone can file a claim.
Is that normal throughout?
No, it's not normal. And I think that's why it's so important that we continue to build capacity in this process and, and share information very publicly throughout our community. I think that we know misinformation is really difficult to fight against, and we want to be very transparent in community discussions, be, above and beyond the regulation that defines public forums through the LPC.
And I think, I'll, I'll let you go here in a second. I think what's really important here is, when I say we had ten really good candidates, we had ten highly qualified candidates. And to be clear, if I wanted to stack the deck, I would have, because there were some people on here that I believe would have brought integrity and commitment and engagement, and they would have challenged the process. But because of what we went through a few years ago, I am not taking that chance by putting people on there and putting them through this process for them to get beat up and to be challenged and their integrity challenged, even though I believe 100% they would have been able to handle it. It was important for me to have integrity as a board chair, to bring people to the table that were vetted, that, that did not have any conflicts of interest that anyone could beat them up over. And so, again, you guys have the authority to override that, and, and that is on your, in your lap. But I feel very confident in the three community members that I've brought to the table.
And I would ask that if any of our board members had a real or perceived conflict of interest with any of the three that, that are nominated or otherwise, that we do make that known. I do not have any conflict of interest with the three.
And these are really good. I mean, you know, and I know these three individually, and, you know, there's, there's nothing I can say about Ms. Eisen, Ms. Long, Mr. Cook, and I, and I think they would, they would be fine. If that's what the majority decides, then that is fine. I think there were two really strong candidates on there, and I, I think that they're two individuals that were probably the two most and some of the most involved people in Nelson County schools, and their involvement dates back long before the LPC was seated before. Those two individuals would be Nikah Mathis, I mean, just with, with Mago and, and the level of knowledge she has and expertise and professionalism, and, and the other one would, would be Donna Blinco. I mean, you know, she's been a big contributor at Go Read, she's been on the UP Foundation. I think it would be impossible to beat those two individuals' resume, and so my preference would be for the two of them to serve. But these are excellent candidates that you've named, so that's just my two cents.
Right, and I agree 100%. Actually, I had Nikah on my list originally, as you well know, but her, her construction company has done work for Nelson County schools in the past, and there's a possibility with construction that they could do contracts with us in the future. That is an obvious conflict of interest. And again, and again, Ms. Blinco, in any given circumstance, she would be an ideal candidate on a local planning committee of any kind in a school district. She comes with a wealth of knowledge, Ms. Eaton is not wrong. However, her relationship with Ms. Eaton is why I believe it's a conflict. Again, there is, there are people that each of us know, that, like I said, you know, the board member, I 100% believe that that board member would have brought integrity, and they would have brought a wealth of knowledge, but they also could have brought bias. And whether it's real or perceived, we have the ability to sort of barricade ourselves in integrity and responsibility that I think we must uphold. And again, that is why my recommendation for the three that I mentioned is, again, where I hold. The board has an opportunity to discuss further, and if they would like to reevaluate those names, that's, it's open for discussion.
Yeah, Ms. Blinco has brought a special thing to me, and that's literacy. I love that literacy part that she brings, to give so much money to us, and to leave her off this, this process is heart touching to me, because I know how much literacy means just to my family.
Absolutely.
But I think she would bring a unique perspective, and Nikah Blinco would bring a unique perspective. And I, I mean, if we break it down, there'd be, we could probably find something with every candidate somewhere, a connection, that we, certain one of us, one of the five of us would find something with each candidate. And that's what I'm saying, we can pick in this all day long if we wanted to, but to leave these two off, I think it would be a huge disservice to us. I wish we could put them on more than what we, the three, I wish we could put all five of them on there.
And I agree 100%, but if we're going to overlook one and, and then not overlook the others, I think that's, again, we're getting to a position that, you know, we either remove the conflicts of interest and we set us up for a process that is clean and fair and has integrity, or we put them on there and we set ourselves up for a possibility of people to question it. And that, again, that is, that is on this board majority.
It's going to be questioned anyway, Tracy, with Ms. Bowling under, it's going to be questioned anyway. No matter what we, no matter who we pick, there's going to be discrepancies.
But we have control over these three people. We don't have control over who was selected tonight. We have control over these three individuals as a board, and that's where, that's where our integrity has to shine.
Yeah, but these, these two, Donna Blinco and Ms. Nikah Mathis, know construction. And to leave them out of this process is, is doing our, our system a huge disservice, is what I'm saying.
And I do, I understand what you're saying. I do understand what you're saying.
Yeah, thank you.
So I just want to say, I'm not voting on this, I just want to acknowledge as an outsider, part of the conversation, because I've experienced this for four years, I've experienced and witnessed the slander and the accusations. I think it's safe to say, we would all agree to this, Ms. Mathis and Ms. Blinco, as you guys have known, is great contributors to our school district, great contributors to our community. I think we could all agree, if you had a multiple choice and you said, which would have fallen would be a conflict of interest, accepting bids for construction, being a family member to a board member, I think we'd both probably acknowledge we checked those boxes. So independently of them being highly, you know, influential, I don't question their integrity in any way, I think they both appealed to, to this process for the right reasons, and I respect them both. At the same time, we have to be realistic.
Okay, so is there a motion, I guess, on the table?
Well, it depends on if you guys are moving forward with the recommendation, or if, I think that is the question. Again, I made the recommendation, I feel like I do not, I do not have the right to make a motion on that recommendation.
So you talked to all 10, and that's where this recommendation is coming from?
There were only two people, I asked every individual the exact four questions, five questions, and the only two people I did not ask those questions were the board member and the, the person that had the litigation against the district. I just, again, I took that one all on my own and said, absolutely, I appreciate them putting their name in, and like I said, I think they would have brought integrity as much as Ms. Mathis and Ms. Blinco, but I am trying to protect the integrity of this board.
I appreciate all 10 applicants and their willingness to be part of this process, and I have no doubt that they have a vested interest in our district and a desire to see things move forward in a, in a good manner. So I appreciate that all 10 have volunteered to serve.
So what would you guys like to do?
Would you like a motion? I'll make a motion to accept the three.
All right, have a motion? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes, we have our LPC. All right, moving on.
So we do need to do the motions. I guess we did them. I guess we just did them.
Oh, yes, sorry.
So this is going to be a very broad overview of the timeline. We went through training on January 21st, went through recruitment process, advertisement process. It said originally KD would review the process on February 19th. Everything has been moved back, obviously, with the board meeting. We originally talked about with Ms. Bowling, a potential work session on March 4th to focus the conversation for two key points, academic update and LPC goals for the board, just allowing the board members to speak to the goals. That work session could be determined later in this meeting, if that's the choice, but now the KD review process will begin tomorrow. Our original goal for starting the local planning committee was March 5th, now that's moved back to March 12th, and just sharing that. So that's a, that's a general timeline. So from here, my role is to begin that process, communicate with the LPC, and allow that LPC to form. Over the course of that first meeting or two, they will identify a chair and a vice chair to help facilitate that process as well.
Mr. Bradley, what is the KDE review? Can you remind us and refresh us?
Good question. So KD basically ensures that we met the requirements of 702K or 4180, which is going back to four years ago, KD did it then, too. Once KD approves it, it's essentially legally binding in nature.
So they're ensuring that the membership reflects what is required in the statute and all. and also that the process was upheld?
Indeed.
Okay, thank you.
The Board of Education role, just to confirm, is required to appoint a board member. We've achieved that. Advertise four and appoint three community business leaders. You also appointed an architect, additional checkbox up there. Those are all part of the requirements. There is an additional optional for the Board of Education role in the LPC, and that's to engage a facilitator. The REG defines a facilitator in that process. We've not discussed that.
I would very much like to consider having an outside neutral facilitator in this process. Have you explored options for that and what may be available?
So, the options that I've discussed, that I'm, that I've currently evaluated are through the cooperatives that exist in our state.
The educational cooperatives, like CREG and CKEC?
Which, they have, they, they just have a wide array of resources. Previously, four years ago, we utilized a gentleman from a few hours away that had been engaged in facility planning for years and years. I believe his name was Tim Eaton. And he showed up maybe the third meeting or fourth meeting for a bit. And he was really just there to help give perspective. I think he came into the party a little late, so I think.
Well, they're, they're also there to sort of make sure that the local planning committee moves along.
That's right.
That they sort of wrangle everybody together, make sure that they are moving forward and not just spending a lot of time, I guess, beaten up by the S.
And I would assume that they're also ensuring that everyone has equal voice and opportunity to be engaged.
They, a good facilitator, you would, should do that, yes.
So, we reached out, you've reached.
So, I've acknowledged to the cooperatives that it could be potential, and I've, I've asked them, to what extent may they meet the requirements of the regulation? So, the regulation was written in 2008, 17 years ago. And it defines the facilitator, kind of agreement and contracts, et cetera. Really, if the board is interested in a facilitator process, what the next step would include would be allowing me to, to establish a facilitator in the context of the regulation that exists. So, it pretty much spells out, here's what a facilitator can do in the, from a, how much we can pay them based on the number of schools we have. It goes over a certain limit, how, how they get paid per hour, it's all defined by REG.
How do you guys feel about engaging in that conversation? Would you guys like for the superintendent to speak with them in regards to a contract for a facilitator?
I would like to explore that avenue.
I would as well.
So, we will need a motion to enter into that conversation, I would believe.
Yeah, I think the motion would just be to allow the superintendent to establish a relationship with a cooperative, to have a facilit, a group that would facilitate the local planning committee that I could then share in our next work session.
I would like to make a motion that Superintendent Bradley engage with one of the educational cooperatives in Kentucky to engage a facilitator for our LPC process in Nelson County.
Do I have a second? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Superintendent Bradley.
Just broadly, the timeline, this was, just when we start the LPC, it says Wednesday's beginning March 5th, that'd be Wednesday's beginning March 12th. The LPC convenes, the, however much time it takes, they develop a draft facility plan. KD reviews that facility plan, that goes back to the DFP, the Nelson County Board reviews it. That's just, if you look at the, that's generically what exists in there. So, Wednesdays occurred last time, Wednesdays is the goal. Community engagement in local planning is also defined by regulation. By REG, there are three public forums. They occur in collaboration with LPC meetings. There's one public hearing that only follows the approval of a draft facility plan by REG. What I am working to explore is how we can reach communities, and I use Wednesdays and Fridays as potential days. Those community discussions would occur more naturally in our communities we represent.
And these are minimum requirements, correct?
The community discussions would not be a minimum requirement, that would be as board members choose, or as the district team members choose to engage as needed with the community.
Have we, or, when I met with Mr. Bradley on February 14th, I suggested the potential for establishing a community survey. To gather feedback about priorities and values and where we rank things. And so, I would like to present that to our board as something that we could explore at the next work session.
Yeah, makes sense.
So, kind of talking a little bit about the community discussion, again, I'm going to challenge each board member to sort of take some of that responsibility on, go to your community. And like I said, take a community member along, take a parent, a teacher, a principal, someone that's on that local planning committee, that's, that's diving into those conversations, so that you can get some of that feedback. And also, just allow your community sort of to be part of the conversation. Not everyone's going to go to the LPC meetings, even though I would encourage everyone to, if you can. So, you're, you're engaged in that. But I know that's not possible for everyone, so I want to try to make sure that, that we're putting the effort in as well to get that information out.
My understanding is that the public forums and the, the three public ones, and then the one following board approval are largely for comments. Is that correct, for public speaking? And so, the community discussions would be an opportunity more for small group exchange and interaction. Am I correct in that, if we choose to do those?
Yes.
Okay, I will commit to doing one of those in my Bloomfield community.
So, the public forum then would be at the beginning of a meeting, kind of like we do these meetings where community members could come up and speak, is that right?
Are we going to do that, the same or separate?
They, they can happen before or after, it doesn't really matter.
Okay, okay. I would like to have it in a manner that would enable all the LPC members to be present, to hear those comments, because I think it is important that they hear the same community feedback that.
That they fall together.
Because that's the purpose of it, for their decision making.
All right, any further discussion? All right, moving on.
I did have a mistake back here. Let's see. Had the wrong name of the person up here. Of course, this is not board approval. I must have just typed the wrong name in. I think I typed, I think I typed those in there.
I think we need to say that more clearly. Okay.
There, there she is.
Can you say that into the microphone, just so that it's heard clearly on the, I want to be sure that our community can hear everything and that it's captured.
Got it, we did have a typo on the slide for New Haven teacher, that name, that was drawn. Mary Bagwell's name was there. In fact, she did not, I think she was contemplating running, but she did not run. Shelley Newton was the only person, that's a teacher that ran in New Haven, and obviously she won, her name was drawn, so she would be asked to be seated on the LPC, just for transparency.
There you go, that's my second official mistake here, 2025.
Right now, getting written up.
So, the board calendar, upcoming board meetings, all meetings will take place at 5:30 as currently scheduled. Originally, this was prior to the move, we had March 4th for a potential work session, recommended to do two things, academic update and a LPC goals. So, it would be the board's opportunity to frame the goals for the LPC, from their perspective.
Mr. Bradley, I believe we also had discussed a few items that would be added to that relative to staffing. And in prior board meetings, I had mentioned the discussion around maternity leave for staff, a paid maternity leave, and having the cost presented to the district at that time. And also, I would like to request that we review a couple of pieces here. The Read to Succeed Act passed a couple of years ago, and I know that we have employed literacy specialists and continue to do so in our elementary programs. And the Literacy Act also passed and comes into effect this year, which is math mathematics. And so, as I think about that, I would like to hear an update on how our district will be addressing the math implementation, particularly for Tier 2 and Tier 3 MTSS interventions, which is for students who may be struggling. I know that we have backpack leaders at each school, which have ties to connection, but I'm not sure if that's a piece of that, because that's something I think we need to consider as a board. And also, we have a math coach, six through 12, but I'm unclear that we also have a literacy coach who is working with literacy for middle school and high school students who may be struggling. And I think we've also talked about school libraries. So, these are things that I would like to hear engaged in our staffing discussion, if that could be part of that March 4th.
Good stuff.
Thank you, and I'll send that in an email as well.
So, there's a couple of other revisions here. April 15th, we'd be moved to Bloomfield Middle School, because we wanted to move May 14th to the airport, to combine it with some of the micro school work we're doing across the district, and talk about the Aggris Science Center project that's occurring in our community. We felt like it was going to, that was a more timely opportunity for that to occur, so we just flopped those around. So, essentially, the motion is, is written to revise locations and add a work session.
All right, we need a motion to add the board work session for March 4th, 2025, at Central Office, and revise the location of the April and May board meetings as discussed.
Motion.
All right, thank you, Ms. Eaton. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Lee. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. All right, so we are going to need a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to KRS 61.8101C and KRS 61.8101F for pending or proposed litigation and student discipline. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.[141.31]
I need a motion to reconvene the regular session of the Nelson County Board of Education.
I'll make a motion.
All right, do I need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Uh-huh.
All right, moving on. Is board actions as a result of the executive session pursuant to KRS 61.8101C and KRS 61.8101F, we need a recommended motion to uphold the discussed expulsion recommendations made by the expulsion committee?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Norman, I need a second.
Oh, second.
Second by Mr. Gillian, and we need a...all in favor?
Uh.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. So with that, we need a motion to adjourn...oh, was there any further discussion?
I want to celebrate one thing.
Yes, I was going to say, there was no celebration on here. I know we don't have that on our agenda, but we're going to take a minute to celebrate.
So I have to say that at the KSBA annual conference over the weekend, that our...some of our CTE students did a wonderful job, and I would encourage anyone in our community to go onto YouTube, to the KEDC YouTube channel, and they have On the Road with Carla, and they...about halfway through, they focus on some of our students, and Mackenzie Downs teaches a lesson on there. She did an excellent job. There was a piece for robotics. And I also want to give a shout out to our district. The Kentucky School Advocate this month had two separate references to things happening in Nelson County. These were unrelated. One was basically a shout out for our CEO program, which is excellent for our teacher recruitment and retention. And a separate one was an interview with Representative Scott Lewis, who is Chair of the Primary and Secondary Education Committee, and the House of Representatives, who came to Nelson County and shouted out our apprenticeship program as being an exemplary program for recruiting students, recruiting teachers and training students. So kudos to everyone who's involved in those pieces.
Definitely, and I'm just going to give a shout out to some athletic programs that are going on right now. Thomas Nelson is playing, and Nelson County's girls team won their...it wasn't district...
District semis.
Oh, it was.
How about them money cards?
So they are moving on. So we're going to cheer them on as they go against Garchtown, correct? Again, you can tell that I don't know, but I watched the game last night, and it was super exciting.
It was fun.
So continue to cheer these kids on. There are a lot of amazing things going on in our district, and I'm going to challenge every board member to come to these meetings, prepare to share something good. Pick something, and I am going to put everyone on the spot from here out to make sure that we are continuing to share what's happening in our district, and make sure that we are taking these opportunities to share the amazing things going on. So with that, anything else?
You stole my lady cards.
All right. We need a motion to adjourn the regular session of Nelson County Board of Education. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thanks, guys. Have a good rest of your...